Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Western Nevada County Candidate Forum. This is now the second forum because the first forum just took place from the 5:00 to 6:00 hour. So if you heard me give this spiel then, you can tune me out right now. But if you're just coming in for this particular forum, then I just have a few things to say. My name is Janice Bedain. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Western Nevada County. Normally, we do our candidate forums live at the Root Center. This is the first time that we've gone on to a virtual format, and we have made some adjustments to accommodate for that. But what you can expect absolutely is what we always deliver, which is very civil discourse. Questions have been submitted already, so we will not be taking any questions from our listening and viewing audience. And to that audience, I also want to let you know that you are muted and we can't see you. So if you want to go have dinner while you're listening to this, you can make as much noise as you want to make. I want to thank all of the candidates for participating in this. The last forum was incredibly informative. That was for trustee area number one for the Board of Education. This is for trustee areas number two and three. This forum is being recorded, and we will make it available probably tomorrow. But any use, edit, or rebroadcast is subject to prior authorization from the League, and any personal recordings of this is not permitted. I just want to remind everybody, we have more forums coming up. On Tuesday, we've got Grass Valley City Council. Next Thursday is Nevada City City Council. And Monday, the 21st, is the NID Divisions Three and Five. All of the information for viewing those and getting involved and submitting questions is on our website. Our website is www.lwvnc.org/leagueofwomenvoterswesternnevada county. So that's an important one to remember because we have lots of voter resources on our page. Now is the time that you should be checking your voter registration, particularly if you've moved or you just want to check in and make sure that all of your information is correct. It's also the time to be giving your voting age children, their friends, your neighbors, family, to register to vote if they are not already. And we have links to all of that sort of stuff on our webpage. So if you have any questions at all about voting, really honestly, go to that page because it's sort of a one-stop shop for voter tools, voter resources. Let's see. Okay, most important, ballots are being sent out right around October the 5th. It's going to be important that people turn your ballots in early. There's going to be lots of drop boxes. Again, you can find out that information on our website. And really, just encourage everybody to get out there and vote, and we'll see if we can't get our numbers in Nevada County even higher. They're already pretty high, and we're grateful for that. But there's more work to be done and more voters, more people to be registered. So without further ado, I am going to now introduce you to our moderator for this evening, Stephen Monkelt. Stephen is a longtime League of Women Voter member and has been moderating for years. I'm sure many of you have seen him already if you've been to any of our forums. So I'm going to turn the evening over to him, and I will be back at the end. Stephen?
Thank you, Janice. And thank you for all who are attending and who will watch this in order to educate yourselves for your voting. It is, of course, extremely important that you vote, and vote early, especially with mail voting. The earlier people get their votes in, the faster the count happens. And that's a help. But don't vote often. You're not allowed to do that. Our candidates tonight are from trustee area two and trustee area three of the County Board of Education. In area two, we have candidates Timothy May and Ashley Newman. In area three, we have Julie Baker and Grace Hudek. In the procedure tonight, each candidate is going to get a two-minute opening, and then we'll have a series of questions, alternating between questions from the community and questions from our three media representatives. And they are Paul Haas from KNCO, Victoria Panade from the Union Newspaper, and Pascal Fussholler, who is not only representing Ubinette as the media representative, but also is running all the behind-the-scenes technology that makes this thing happen. So we give her extra credit. The sequence of questioning, I'm going to have the trustee area two candidates answer each question first, and then go to the trustee area three candidates. And I will be alternating the sequence within the area so that nobody answers every question first or last. And we have, with that introduction, we have two minutes for the opening. And we're going to start with trustee area two candidate Timothy May.
Oh, hello. Should I go ahead, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. I'm Timothy May, and I figured I'd use my two minutes just to tell you a little bit about myself because I'm sure some specific issues will be put to us all. I'm a 30-year resident of Nevada County. My kids went through the public school system here, so I'm familiar with the county and I'm familiar with the public school system. I am a 45-year veteran teacher. I taught five years of high school English and 40 years of community college English at Uba College. So I also know my way around the public school system. Just like Susan Clara, but I heard a little bit of the last of the forum, and she said that she'd been getting around and talking to teachers, and they were a mess about Zoom teaching. I know people that are doing in-person teaching, hybrid teaching. Pandemic teaching is very, very difficult. Pandemic parenting is extremely difficult, and in some cases, grandparenting and friends that are helping out. Everyone's having a difficult time. It's a stressful time. And I think what I would stress more than anything else is that what's needed is teamwork. The last thing in the world, because pandemic teaching is so difficult for the teachers, for the administrators, for the boards, everybody, the last thing in the world we need is distractions. And what we do need is collaboration and teamwork. And for collaboration and teamwork and knowledgeable teamwork, count me in. That's fine. Steve, that's enough.
Steve, please unmute yourself.
Yes. I think I got it. Okay, so the second candidate for trustee area two is Ashley Newman, and you have two minutes.
Thank you so much for this invitation. I am absolutely honored to serve on the Nevada County Board of Education as the area two trustee. I look forward to serving another term. Eager to utilize my experience post-COVID as a former educator, CDC certified in multiple infectious diseases, and my experience with trauma bonded youth from my years presenting at our local juvenile halls. Before being elected four years ago, I was on our local sex trafficking task force and our superintendent's task force on sex education curriculum. Child sex trafficking is at an all-time high in California, so are STD rates in our youth. I also substitute taught locally from preschool at Sierra College to AP History at Bear River High School. I've taught in or toured almost every campus in Nevada County. As the only candidate or board member that has served a full term on our board, I bring needed experience and diversity. During my first term, I have helped advance education options while also advocating for at-risk youth, campus safety, child sex trafficking prevention, vaping prevention, STD prevention, and correcting historic omissions in textbooks. Our families lived in Nevada County for 20 years. My sister went to Nevada Union. My brother went to Bear River. Our children were homeschooled, charter schooled, and public schooled locally at Chicago Park School, Nevada City Charter School, and Hennessy Elementary. I've worked in the medical field for 20 years. Nine of those years were spent working with local nonprofits, successfully presenting to over 30,000 Northern California students, parents, and educators on various topics related to helping youth make healthy choices. I'm the only board member or candidate that's presented in the two schools this board oversees. I was in Girls, Anderson, and Juvenile Hall multiple times per month for years. I'm also the only board member or candidate with this experience and unique skill set. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So then we go to the two candidates for trustee area three, starting with Julie Baker. You have two minutes. Oops, and you're muted. Go to your lower left corner and unmute.
I'm on Zoom all day. I think you guys muted us, so I just unmuted. Okay, so don't start me yet. Okay. "Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum today. I'm running because I think I can make a difference for students, our schools, and Nevada. I'm no longer content to sit on the sidelines and complain about what I was hearing at the board meetings that distracted from the real focus and priorities of the county board. But instead, it was time to use my problem-solving skills and my passion for education to get involved. I believe every child deserves a quality education, not a well-run school system provides a foundation for this. I also think now more than ever, children need to feel hopeful, inspired, and safe. A solid educational foundation is the starting point for giving kids a love for learning and building an innovative, compassionate, and community-oriented society. Today's student has to be prepared to live in a rapidly changing technological environment and needs to develop the skills and path forward for a successful career in life. For teachers to be successful, they need ongoing professional development and access to resources. I bring my skills and experience as a nonprofit and community business leader and parent to the Nevada County Board of Education. I'm a junior now enrolled at Forest Charter School, so I'm acutely aware of the current challenges students and teachers are trying to manage, which I think is critical to understanding and providing guidance and oversight for county schools. In fact, I'm a mother of three sons, 25, 22, and 16. All three attended Nevada County Public Schools. And in November, the seventh generation of Bakers to be born in Nevada County will make his arrival making me a grandmother for the first time. I have deep experience in managing nonprofit boards and running businesses, which is also a critical skill to advising and analyzing school budgets, especially as we face a financial downturn interstate. I have served on multiple boards, including the Friendship Club, and was elected to Nevada Union Site Council in 2019. As a longtime community member, I also bring connections, which I see as valuable to building resources for increased community collaboration and opportunities for our students and teachers. For eight years, I was the executive director of the Center for the Arts in Grass Valley and worked closely with the County Superintendent's Office to support arts-based curriculum. I'm also a professional advocate for the arts and can bring my experience in navigating the state legislative and budget process to best represent
Ten seconds.
... in Sacramento and DC to make sure resources such as broadband and prioritize for rural communities. I hope I can earn your vote on November 3rd for trustee area three. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we go to the second candidate for trustee area three. That's Grace Hudek. And you're muted right at the moment. And you could probably undo that yourself. Yeah, there you did. So now you have two minutes.
All right. Thank you for having us. Hello, friends. My name is Grace Hudek, and I'm running for Nevada County School Board, Area Three. There's a crisis in education. I'm a public health nurse, and I've been a public health nurse for more than 30 years. When schools closed because of COVID, I knew I had to step forward to help. My roots here in Nevada County run deep. My grandparents were born above the bakery in Grass Valley. My aunt, my great aunt, graduated from Grass Valley High School back in 1875. Over 25 years ago, my husband and I started our own successful business, and I've been the CEO ever since. We also have four children, and I have also public school, private school, charter schooled, and distance schooled, all of them. I have experience teaching special needs kids, academically on target children, and gifted kids. I'm running for school board because I care about the students, the parents, and the teachers, and I want to give parents more choice in education. Due to COVID, parents have been forced to try to work to support their families and distance learn. I understand what it's like to try to support your family financially and to try to provide an excellent education for your child. Distance learning can be wonderful, but it's very difficult. Many parents feel ill-equipped to do what the schools have asked them to do. Families say, how can I work all day and sit with the first grader for six hours while they're on Zoom? Parents tell me that they want to switch to a charter school, but the waitlist is a year or more. That's not fair. All kids in Nevada County should be able to attend the school of their choice regardless of their ZIP code, and parents should be able to decide what school a child attends, not the district or the state. I believe my experience in public health, my financial background, and my years of public, private, and homeschooling will help the district get through COVID.
You have 10 seconds.
I'm uniquely qualified as a public health nurse, a CEO, and a mom, and with my help, we will get through this together. Thank you very much. I'm Grace Hudek.
Thanks to all four of you for those excellent opening statements. And now we're going to go to the first question, which is something that's submitted to me from the public. And we'll start out with the answers from the area two candidates. And we'll start with Ashley first and then Timothy. So first question, what do you think are the two most important issues facing our local districts and the county as a whole?
Well, obviously, the COVID situation and reopening. So that's going to be the number one issue for us. And then it's also doing it in a healthy way that accommodates everybody from the IEP, special needs families, gifted families, working families that are this close to homelessness and can't distance learn without falling into homelessness. But then also the whole racial situation that's happening right now after George Floyd died. I mean, I didn't know half the stuff that was on the TV about the Tulsa Race Riots and Black Wall Street. So I went to our brand-new history textbooks, and I looked it up, and a lot of it wasn't there. Like even Trail of Tears was only mentioned in two out of four textbooks, and it was just one sentence each. So it's not really in our purview. And we get the textbooks from the high school and what we're going to get at our two schools. But looking at that and helping fight institutionalized racism, but doing it in a historically accurate way without bias would be what I think would be the two, the COVID and the race relations and doing it accurately. Well, the last things our kids need are indoctrination when they're going through all this right now.
Thank you. And that takes us to Mr. May for the same question. What are the two most important issues facing local districts and the county? Oh, and you're muted.
Okay, yeah. COVID, I agree, is the greatest issue. Safety is the greatest issue. Reopening our schools safely, again, I agree with all of that. I'm going to try and stay off of the sorts of matters that do not pertain to the purview of the county board. I'm going to try and concentrate on the County Board of Education. What the county board does is overview the budget, and that provides services, much-needed services for these local school districts. Things like making sure that there's plenty of Wi-Fi connections across the county, even out there deep in the ridge, working hard to bring the money in to make that possible, extending our lunch programs and making sure that there's no nutritional problem for families and kids, trying hard. The mental health issue, the districts are scrambling over time to provide counseling for the kids and for their parents and to try and hold that all together. Childcare, and I know that Scott Lay is doing everything he can to pull the agencies together that can expand childcare. Those are the issues locally that we face right now. Now, as far as, I want to make this very, very clear, and I'll say it again and again tonight, the county board of education
Ten seconds.
... has a role in determining the policies of the local school districts. So when we start talking about textbooks, and when we start talking about curriculum, and when we start talking about, oh, they should
That's time.
... this platform or that platform, that is not our role. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to the two candidates from area three, starting with Ms. Hudek. What do you think are the two most important issues facing the districts and the county as a whole?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, I'm with everybody else. COVID is definitely the most important thing right now. And that's one of the reasons that I'm running because as a public health nurse, I'll be able to work with Dr. Johnson and with our superintendent and really provide some medical expertise on the board so that we can get our schools open as safely as we can, as quickly as we can, because obviously, this is a big medical issue. And so I'm just excited to offer that part of me to be on the board to really assist. And my other priority is school choice. And so I really feel like also having my medical background is going to help me so that we can get kids back to school and we can open up our schools as safely and quickly as we can. And so that's what I'm looking forward to, and that's what I think are my top priorities.
Thank you. And the second candidate from area three, Julie Baker.
Okay, so to restate the obvious, yes, COVID-19 is obviously hugely impactful for our students, for our teachers, for our administrators, for our entire community. We need to base our facts in science and not conspiracy theories. And I'm all for that in terms of how we make decisions about what is safe for our children and for our teachers and everybody else. I also think COVID has illustrated that we have the need, we have incredible economic disparity in our community, and the need for broadband is clear and apparent in terms of our learning abilities for our kids. And the second priority, I'm deeply concerned about what's going to happen at the state level in terms of our budget. I work in advocacy and legislation. I know what's going to happen, and it's going to impact our own community in terms of the budget for our schools. And so I think having a really strong fiscal oversight, which is something I can bring as someone who's run businesses and many nonprofits successfully, is really important, especially this year.
Thank you. And now we'll switch to a media question. And considering where we left off at the last forum, Victoria Panade from the Union, would you like to start us off with a media question?
Sure. Thank you. Hi, everyone. My question is, what specifically in your career would you say has best prepared you for a role on the Board of Education?
And then we'll start with area two, and that would be Mr. May first.
I would say that my role as a faculty leader dealing with our board of trustees, always in a diplomatic way, sometimes in an adversarial way, but I got to know boards and how boards work. And of course, behind all that is a knowledge of what's needed in the classroom. And so I would say that in my career, the thing that's prepared me most is to see how boards function well and how they dysfunction. I've seen boards that the school board of the county is only four people. And if you don't have a team of four working as a team, and that doesn't mean to be a shrinking wallflower and not speak up when you need to speak up, when improvements are needed. But if you don't have a team collaborating, then you're going to have a dysfunctional board. You're not going to get the work needed that is needed to support the local school districts. I know that from firsthand. I've seen boards that are very functional, and I've seen boards that are rendered dysfunctional by a board member that has, for instance, some sort of special agendas that they want to push rather than what's best for the county, best for the school districts throughout the county. And that's what I've learned, and I think that that's invaluable
You have 10 seconds.
... lesson for this board, yes.
Thank you. And then the second candidate from area two would be Ms. Newman.
And the question again? What's the?
Yeah, the question was, what specifically in your career is most related or has best prepared you for a role on the board?
Before being on the board? First of all, I'm one of five. There's five board members. And I'm the only one that has served a full term, been elected, served a full term, the only one with the complete four-year most experience. I came from the medical industry. I'm still in the medical industry. I'm the only board member that has school-aged children. I think the only board member on the school board that has school-aged children, yes. Candidate, yes, but not board member. I'm significantly younger than the other board members. Kate was younger, but she hadn't had kids yet. And I'm also the only board member that is working through the struggles of being a working mom without a state taxpayer-funded pension during a pandemic, getting jobs, trying to feed the family, working with the kid on the Zoom, making sure everything's set up. So fortunately, our child's in high school, but it's a struggle. And so I understand what parents are going through. So the background information, being the only minority elected on the board, the only full-term member, and the only one with school-aged children that's actually going through what we're going through right now. So I can relate to the parents that are coming to me and emailing me and voicemailing me and messaging me on Facebook over and over again with just absolutely heartbreaking messages of what it's like to go through what they're going through right now, which we are all going through it together.
You have 10 seconds.
We collaborate, but also part of that collaboration is looking at everything, including depression, suicide, addiction, all the stuff that's happening right now.
Thank you. And now we go to the area three candidates, and starting with Ms. Baker.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So in terms of my career, specifically why I think I would be good for this role on the County Board of Education, for me, it was probably the last job I had as eight years as the executive director of the Center for the Arts. Part of it was that I came to the organization when it was in shambles, and I built it into something that was really a powerful organization for our community. I learned a tremendous amount doing that, including the value of community connections and how important that is. And I think that's something that I can really bring to the role here because I've done a lot of different things in the 22 years that I've lived here, including currently serving on the Nevada County Relief Fund. I have relationships in a lot of different businesses within the schools as well as within a government and other nonprofits. And I think that's important to bring to the tables, particularly as our resources are maybe jeopardized based on how our funding might go. When I was at the center, we worked a lot on arts education in particular. And one year, we brought literature to life to bring Richard Wright's Black Boy. And we brought it, and Nevada Union High School students came to that. And it's a semi-autobiographical story of growing up in Jim Crow South. And he was, the kids came out of there, and they looked at us, and they said, that was the most incredible thing they'd ever seen. First of all, it was presented by a solo guy who was African-American from New York, and they
10 seconds.
... had never listened to that before. And they asked the teacher afterwards, they said, can we please read this book? And that felt really successful in terms of understanding what we're missing and what we need in our education.
Thank you. And the second candidate from the third area is Grace Hudek.
Hi. Again, thank you for the question. And I think I bring a lot of uniqueness to the board. As I mentioned before, I'm a public health nurse, and so I will definitely be able to help the board and families get through the COVID crisis. The other experience that I really bring is I also have several special needs children, and I also am working with special needs families. One of my neighbors down the street, they have a severely disabled daughter right now who's in our public school system, and she hasn't had services since February or March. She should be in a special classroom with specialized teachers, and these poor parents are having to pay for their own child's care and their own child's education, and they're just really struggling. And so I just feel like I'm really an advocate since I have children that have had special needs and do have special needs, as well as I'm also a working mom and have done a lot of homeschooling myself and distance learning. So I just really understand what they're struggling with. It's hard. Distance learning is wonderful, but it's hard, and these families are struggling. So those are the things that I would bring. And then also, I am a CEO, and so budgets are really familiar to me. I'm used to working with very large budgets within our business and other entities that I work with. And so I'm looking forward to helping with the budget as well. And I know things are getting tight within our budgets in the county. And so it's just an area that I specialize in.
You have 10 seconds.
So those are the qualifications that I bring.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to the second question from community members. And again, we're starting with area two and then area three. This time, the first response will go to Ms. Newman. How do you see the school board's relationships with the superintendent of schools and the local superintendent's administrators and teachers?
Well, it's really important to have a good relationship. Superintendent Scott Lay, I was the only person initially that voted for him to be hired and switched the board over to actually vote for him. They were leaning towards voting the other way. So one of the benefits of being an independent voice on the board is to stand up for what you believe in. And I was definitely a voice that stood up for Superintendent Scott Lay. He's been exceptional. He takes all my emails. When I get an email from a distraught family, I say, hey, what would be a good thing to say? What do we have going on? And he always responds to me immediately. When it comes to the board, you're going to have difference of opinion, and that's the sign of a healthy board. So if you want a healthy board, you need to have a difference of opinion and hash things out. And that's where the best answers come from, is when you And that's where the best answers come from, is when you have that checks and balances and the difference of opinion. So I really valued Scott, the having an open door for all of that. I really, really appreciate him in that regard. And the staff has been great, too, really knowledgeable. There's no way a board member can know everything about everything, especially starting out. So the staff has been exceptional, and they always take calls. They always take emails. They've been really accessible. I've been really impressed with them.
Thank you very much. And the second candidate from trustee Area Two would be Mr. May.
And the question is the role of the county supervisor to the role of the local supervisors, correct?
How do you, how do you see the board's relationship with the superintendent and the local superintendents, administrators, and teachers?
Well, again, I will come back that we have no role in determining the policies of, of the local school districts. Our job on that board, at that county board, is to work through the supervisor in the approval of his budget and through the special state of the, state of the county reports that he will give to us and the other special services that we oversee to provide services to the county. But when we start talking about textbook selection, when we start talking about a special program that needs to be instituted, that is not the position of the county board. That is the decision of a local board and, and a local board working with the administrators and working with the faculty and the staff. That's a statutory challenge to the very function of the, of the board, of the county board. The county board is not by law allowed to do that. And so what that is, you know, of course, a healthy difference of opinion between five board members. I agree. But there's a difference between expressing your opinions in a collaborative fashion and disrupting local school districts, holding rallies, appearing before local school districts and telling them, you should do this and you shouldn't do that, you should adopt this textbook and you should not adopt that textbook. That is not our job.
You have 10 seconds. And it sounds like you finished.
I'm there. I finished.
Okay. So now we go to the candidates for trustee Area Three, starting with Ms. Hudek.
Good. Thank you again for the question. Well, I see my role as an advocacy role for both, or also all three, for parents, students, teachers, and administrators. And I think that we can really work together with our superintendent. And that is our job to work with our superintendent to really provide the best product for our families, for our students, and for our teachers. I was speaking with one of my, one of my neighbors who is a teacher in the Pleasant Ridge School District. And I was asking her, you know, I like to ask people, tell me about your concerns. What do you think is going on right now? What are you really worried about? And she just said she felt like, because she's in the South County, she felt disenfranchised, and she felt like, you know, they don't really care about us down in South County. And so I, I think as, as when we're on the school board, part of our job is to really help people feel included, feel important, feel like they're needed, and then be a bridge between them and the superintendents. That's what I feel like my job is.
Thank you. And that takes us to the second candidate for Area Three. That's Ms. Baker.
Well, as the superintendent is an elected official, Scott Lay in this case, we have no purview over him. As we are elected officials, I think the most important thing that we also have to do is listen and listen to our constituents, listen to the people we represent, which in this case, although we are certain trustee areas, the entire county votes for every position. So I see our role as really trying to hear what is going on throughout the county and how we can best support that. Again, understanding, as Tim has illustrated, what is the actual role of the county board trustee? It isn't actually doing things like working on curriculum for the high school. That is really the district's purview. It is more about oversight, fiscal responsibility, budgets, and then all these fabulous programs that the superintendent of school's office does that include things like STEAM expos, which I was really happy to hear that it's not STEM, but it's STEAM as an arts advocate, things like that. So I think that it's, it's a really clear understanding of the role. And, and I think it's really also supporting every aspect of it. So you have, of course, number one, we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep our kids safe, to keep them feeling hopeful in this time of real crisis. We also want to give teachers the tools to be successful. So part of our, our purview is also professional development. And then the final piece, of course, is parents giving them
You have 10 seconds.
Ones who have, work full-time like I do as well and have a kid in school currently, the ability to parent successfully, to make our kids successful in life as well.
Thank you. And now we'll turn to our second media question. And Pascal Fruhsohn, would you like to tee one up?
Oh, so candidates are looking at the, actually at one of the voluminous board packets. I see that the budget revision number one is coming up, and it actually shows that the Nevada County Superintendent of School had, would have a $825,000 positive cash flow. Do you think the reserves and all the, according to the, the budget report, the full fund balance continued to remain positive and exceed minimum required by state level? In your opinion, is it right now a good idea to have the fund balances to have excess reserves? Or should those be put towards some programs or? And if yes, which programs would you like to spend the $800,000 on?
And from trustee Area Two, we'll start with Mr. May.
Well, I'd go back to the services, broadband for the entire district. If we, I mean, for the entire county, I would go back to if we're going to decide that that reserve is going to be spent, then that would be a top priority. Again, expansion of lunch and nutrition programs, staff development. Oh, my gosh, Julie, that was a great, great point. It's a passion of mine, staff development. I served as a staff development coordinator for many years. And I know that the county school's office does offer teaching coaches. I'd like to see an expansion of those coaches for Zoom teaching and for in-person teaching. Those are the types of programs that I like, and childcare, anything we can do in the area of childcare, for sure. Mental health, anything we can do in the, in the area of expanding the district's counseling abilities. Those are the things that I would, if, through a collaborative process of the five board members advising the superintendent, and the superintendent in discussion with us about that budget decided that, well, we are going to go ahead and, and use this reserve in a time of emergency, then those are the kinds of things that I would be looking at.
Thank you. And second candidate from Area Two would be Ms. Newman.
Well, I definitely, that's something I would invite, you know, have the direction of the staff. And Scott, there are some times where the budget overlaps, where we do need to use reserves for schools that miss their budget because there's, there's some, I don't want to get in the weeds, but there are some reasons why you have to have that reserve. Obviously, in a time like this, everything changes. So we're probably going to need smaller class sizes when we do get back in the classroom and more teachers, especially if we have teachers that are vulnerable health-wise, that need to stay in distance learning, and maybe giving younger teachers a chance to come in that are really eager, obviously, if they want to and they're excited about it. That would be something that, that I think when we get back into the classrooms, because I think that's where the direction nationwide we're going, is getting the, the healthy kids and healthy teachers back in the classrooms with common sense restrictions, to have the smaller class size and have those, you know, more cohorts, pandemic pods for when we do get back in. And then hopefully, we can do that and have like an arts pod where those kids, you know, stay together, all the art kids, a drama pod, a basketball pod, a girls' volleyball pod. And then we can, you know, that might be an option. But obviously, it's, it's up to the direction of the superintendent and each superintendent. And Scott was unique. He was actually appointed by our board. He wasn't elected. So we did appoint him, and I was key in him voting. And our board does cover textbooks for Earl Jamison and Juvenile Hall in addition to the Staff Development Day, which racial equality, fighting injustice should be something.
Thank you. And then we go to the, whoops, stop that. I'm running the stopwatch at the same time we're doing these other things. So now we go to the Area Three candidates. We start with Julie Baker for the answer to this one.
So Stephen, now you know how the students, the teachers, and the parents feel. You're trying to rub your stomach and pat your head or whatever the thing is, right? Yeah, it's a challenging time. I think in terms of, you know, having some reserves and it was $825,000, congratulations. I think that's fantastic, and it's great going into this particular year with that. I certainly wouldn't advocate to spend it all at this point in time. I would also, as Ashley stated, listen to what the staff and, and the superintendent recommend. They're going to have a much closer picture of what is needed based on their experience and being on the ground. I do think that professional development right now is critical as we're engaging in a whole new paradigm of how we are learning and teaching. So continued development of that. I think some of the health programs that I think that the superintendent's office offers, she could certainly be expanded upon, particularly now, again, when we're seeing some issues with kids and mental health, which we've been seeing for a long time. But I think the crisis, you know, is hard for everyone right now. This is a very challenging time between COVID wildfires and everything being upside down. I think we need to pay attention to how is this impacting not only our students, but also our teachers and supporting them in this as well. So again, professional development, I think, is an important piece.
You have 10 seconds.
Yeah, a stronger teacher makes for a better student.
Thank you. And then our second candidate from Area Three is Ms. Hudek.
Excuse me. Hello. That's a great question. I love that question because it's so good to hear that when we have a budget surplus, that's always great in government. I know we've also received the Carers Act grant, which has been helping us each of the schools with hiring extra teachers, hiring extra administrators and things. I've been talking with some of the teachers about that as well, and they're saying that they've had to hire other people as well. So my idea, I'm definitely a fiscal conservative, and so I would also be working with the superintendent. And, but I'd like to see some in the reserves and then see where our needs fall and where they lie, just like the other candidates. I also would like to have some priority, again, with our special ed students. They've been really suffering through this situation as well. So if I had to pick a priority, I would look at our special ed, and I would look at our mental health as two possible options where we could spend some of it. But I also would like to keep some of our budget and reserve because you just don't know what's going to come tomorrow. And we don't know how long COVID is going to last. This could be a longer term thing than we were all hoping. And so we may need some more reserves for some other things that, you know, are going to come up in the future that we're just not aware of and don't know about yet.
Thank you. So next question from the community. What is in your background that will help you make decisions on the issues currently facing the school board? And we start with Area Two and Ms. Newman for this one.
That was a lot like the previous one. Thank you very much for that question. I think the unique things that I bring to the school board is that I've worked and presented in the two schools that we oversee. So we do have more of an independent oversee with Earl Jamison, the continuation school, and our local juvenile hall. So we do approve their, their textbooks, their curriculum. We know more of the day-to-day goings-on with those two schools. So I presented in those two schools for multiple years, multiple times a month. So I'm very familiar with this at-risk demographic. I'm also very familiar with sex trafficking victims, which a lot of times the, the females and the young males are in that same demographic. So I understand it's a really unique demographic and teaching to them. And obviously, what we want to do is help them get out of the situation they're in to be mainstreamed, to move on and just blossom and grow with their life. And a lot of times, connections with teachers. A lot of these kids have said later on that a connection with one or two teachers has made all the difference in their life. So I've actually been approached on Election Day. Last time, I was approached by one of the kids from juvie at Safeway. And he said, you know, are you the lady that presented at Juvenile Hall? And I said, yes. And he's like, oh, my gosh, thank you so much for what you did. You really helped me out. And we, we had a lot of topics with that much time there, but we talked about healthy relationships, not just STD stuff. So my heart for those at-risk kids, that's my main thing. But then also, having the most experience on the board right now with the warriors experience, the budget experience, et cetera.
Thank you.
Stephen, could you repeat the question?
I sure will. What is in your background that will help you make decisions on the issues currently facing the school board?
Currently facing the school board is the issue of teamwork. I was an athlete. I know what teamwork is all about. I have a background in the United States Marine Corps. That taught me teamwork. I have a lifetime in education, and I had to work with my colleagues in order to serve at-risk students. Now, I type, I've had 40 years of experience teaching at-risk students down at Yuma County, some of the poorest students in the state, some of the most challenging students in the, in the state in the sense of just sweethearts, absolutely sweet students. But their home background, sometimes I'd go out to the river to the homeless encampments in order to find my students and talk to my students. So I have experiences with diverse populations of students and at-risk students. And I have the experience with working as a team and not denigrating any of the team and supporting the local school districts. That's part of the teamwork that is, is, that is, is expected of the, of the county board. It's, we're part of the, the Nevada County school system, and it's all one large team. And again, the, the idea of, of interfering
You have 10 seconds.
School districts, that's not being part of the team.
Thank you. Then we go to the Area Three candidates. And starting this question with Ms. Hudek. And the question again was, what is in your background that will help you make decisions on the issues currently facing the school board?
Well, as I've been explaining, I'm a public health nurse. And one of the things that I was able to do when I worked in public health nursing was I had noticed that many of our kids in the Tahoe area, especially Hispanic kids, had severe baby bottle tooth decay, and they had no, no healthcare. They had no means to get any kind of dental care whatsoever. So I partnered with a dentist, a local dentist, and we started dental screens. And so then we identified all these kids, but we were like, what do we do now? And now that we had these kids identified, we found some local dentists, dentists in Sacramento, even hospitals, and we got some of those kids treatment, but it wasn't enough. And so then I thought to myself, we need to do more, and I've got to do more. So I got together with my administration, and I co-wrote a grant for Placer County. And we wrote the first grant for the first dental clinic in Placer County so that we could get services to all of those kids up in the Tahoe area. And I'm really proud of being able to do that, to identify that need, to be able to write the grant, to be able to institute the dental clinic, like I said. So I'm just, I'm a really out-of-the-box thinker. I like to go out in the community. Another issue we had for those kids was transportation. So we had to think, you know, how can I get those kids down from, all the way from Tahoe down to the dental clinic? And we partnered with the casinos. We said, you know what? They've got buses. I wonder if they'd be willing to help us.
10 seconds.
Were willing to help us, and we transported those, and those casinos were willing to transport the kids to the dental clinic. So I just wrote out of the box thinker, and I like to think about our poor communities and our communities that are
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Baker, same question.
Well, I guess the first thing would be to define how do you current, what are the current issues facing the school board? And so I think that some people will say that it's COVID. Some people will say that there are some agendas being brought to the school board that really are not the purview of the school board, that there are people bringing some conspiracy theories and ideas around things that are not based in fact and based in science. I think that's, you know, first, it depends on what you say is the issue. If we're going to say the primary issue right now is that we're in a public health crisis, the experience that I have working within that is I'm not a nurse. I'm a mother. I have three children. I have very, three very different children. They're all boys. They kind of look alike, but they're totally different. They're completely different learners. And I've had to adapt and figure out how to manage that and understand how to best support them. In my own, and that, I think, is important, and understanding what are the different ways and modes that we need to accommodate all different types of children, and that every child has the, should have the opportunity, including the seven kids that are in our purview at Earl Jamison and Sugarloaf. So, but the other thing that I think is important in my background is, is So, but the other thing that I think is important in my background is the work I'm doing currently, which is advocating for the arts sector and culture and entertainment statewide for California. And we've had to really pivot as a sector. We are basically entirely shut down because it depends upon gathering. So I've had to work with our community to figure out what is the best way for us to continue to do our work within limited resources, which I think is going to be some of the ways that we're going to have to adapt in every aspect of the way that the world is going to be for a little while.
Thank you. And let's see, looks like we have the immediate question and this time it will be from Paul Haas of Gansio.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, everybody. And I realized we're running a little tight on time. And so if you want to roll your answer to my question into your closing statements, because you have three minutes for that, you're more than welcome to do that instead. The question is, why are you?
We actually have till 7:30. So we've still got time for this question and maybe another one before.
Well, then I'd love to hear the story. Okay. So, so candidates, I've heard a lot of you talk about the need, you know, wanting to help students and everything. And Tim, you've been very clear about the difference between the county and the district boards. And I know Ashley, you're already an incumbent, so you've been on the county board. Why did you choose, so for Ashley, why did you choose to be on the county board or run for the county board? And why are the rest of you looking at the county rather than a district?
My first, no, I went last time.
Yeah, so the, so the first answer is from Mr. May, actually.
Well, I thought that I, it would be a good fit for me as a county board. I think that, I think I can work as collaboratively with the board, calm things down so that, so that the county board can provide the services to the local districts. The last thing the local districts need right now, local districts, local school districts are so complicated. And this is such a, this is the most challenging teaching time in our lifetimes. The last thing in the world that they need right now are distractions. They need support, not distraction. They need help, not denigration. And so I chose the county board because I know I could work well with Scott Lay and I could work well with Susan Clarabut and I could work well with Louise Johnson and I could work well with the other board members that are elected. I, I, I just think it would be a good fit and I, again, I wanted to, I wanted to, that school board is being challenged to do things that it is not by law supposed to do. It's not supposed to review textbooks. Why are we pushing textbooks on the county board? Why are we, why are we pushing sex ed programs, particular sex ed programs to the county board? I think it's going to the, to the wrong agencies. It's going to the wrong boards and the wrong agencies. I want to help that board in a collaborative fashion to get its work done to serve the local school districts.
Thank you.
Steve.
And our second candidate from area two is Ms. Newman.
I think there's a confusion. So before I got elected, and one of the reasons I got elected is I was on the superintendent's task force for sex ed curriculum review. So the whole point of it was bringing together people in the area that were familiar with STDs and sex ed and teenagers and all of that area nurses and doctors, put them in a room together to help evaluate all of the curriculum out there for sex education. And it was the superintendent's task force for that specific product, device or curriculum. And then I was also in juvenile hall. And so while I'm in juvenile hall, I see that there's a sign on the girl's side that says, if you need to leave for an abortion while you're in juvie, just let us know and we can take you. But there was no mention of any STD services and testing. And there was no mention of any of it on the boy's side. So when I asked, you know, when I did my sex ed presentation, the boys, you know, the boys and the girls were like, I was suggesting that they get tested while they were at juvenile hall because it's a great opportunity to find out what you have. And they said they won't allow us to get tested because we don't have pre-existing or, you know, visible conditions or we aren't actively exposed or whatever. I'm missing the word. But anyway, so they, they weren't getting tested on everything that they could be tested for. So I went to Scott, I just mentioned it at a board meeting. And again, we have a very open line of communication. And he goes, why, I didn't know that. And so we looked into it. And so now we've got, you know, you can get free STD testing. Obviously it's free while you're in juvenile hall, but it's posted on both sides. So both the boys and the girls get STD testing. And then, and then the same thing with the sex trafficking. I was on the local sex trafficking task force. So I'm presenting and so I brought that to the board and they added that too, which was awesome.
Thank you. And then we have the, from area three, we have the first responder for this is Ms. Baker.
Can you repeat the question? I just.
The question is, why, why are you choosing to run for the county board rather than a district board?
Thank you. Yeah, so number one, that was the only role, thing I could run for, I'll be honest. And I desperately want to engage right now because I'm done ranting on Facebook about what I see as wrong in the world and I want to be involved in our community in a, in a way that I think can make a difference. Then when I realized I could run for the Nevada County Board of Education and the more I read about it and started to attend it, I really felt that I had something I could bring to the table. And the other piece of it is that it's, I deeply believe that having a, a strong and successful and solid school system, the entire county school system is foundational, not only for our children, but for our entire community. And I'm someone who's been very involved in the success of Nevada County, I would say, in terms of attempting to lend both my professional expertise, my passion, my enthusiasm, my ideas, my marketing skills, et cetera, to, to build a community that is based on empathy, kindness, love and ways that we can truly, truly work together. And I think that that's something that I see that a county board can have a purview on versus a district board, which is more specific, I've got a fly in front of me, which is more specific.
You have ten seconds.
To, you know, the curriculum for those particular districts. The other thing I wanted to say is Scott was elected. So I don't, that was, that's not true. He was elected. Thanks.
Thank you. The second candidate from area three would be Ms. Hudek.
Hi, okay, again, thank you for the question. And the reason that I'm running for the county board, I have to say it wasn't intentional choice. It wasn't a last minute choice. Again, I'm running because of COVID, because of what I can contribute as a community member here. And the things that I really feel passionate about that I know the board can have great impact on, again, is special education. They're really deeply involved with special education students. And like I said, that's something that is near and dear to my heart. And then also they approve inter-county transfers. And since I'm really a school choice advocate, it's an ideal place for me to be able to have an impact there as well, to be able to look at why students want to go somewhere else and to be able to assist them if possible, to get the academic education and the location and the things that they and their parents feel are important to them and what they need. So those are some of the reasons that I really enjoy working and want to work on the county board versus the local board.
Thank you. Okay, we have another question from the community and going back to our area two people. This will go first to Ms. Newman. And the question is, do you believe that having many different school districts within our county is an effective style of education? And what are the advantages and disadvantages?
Absolutely. I advocate for school choice. So the more we can have that local control and Governor Newsom gave our local schools local control, then they are their own little, you know, kingdom. So that way, parents can choose to go where they're more comfortable and what fits best for their family. So while our kids were going up initially, I homeschooled them, taught them both to read by the time they were four. And then they mutinied. They were like, I'm going to go outside and play. So we put them in a couple of different schools to find out what best met their needs. And when our kids had certain issues, we would have to, you know, find a place that fit them. So I love the idea of a district and I love the idea of the superintendent of schools and our county board being more of an advisory role over the top. And yes, we do budgets, but we also do the teacher enrichment. The districts, individual districts look to us for direction in some areas. And there can be some, some issues that can, that can bleed over a little bit and there's areas that can help. So, I mean, I got up, I ruffled people's feathers with the whole textbook thing and it was a very innocent thing. I noticed it in the textbook after George Floyd. I talked to Scott about it. He agreed, yes, those omissions, that stuff should be in there. Trail of tears should be mentioned more than twice out of five history books and more than once in seats. And so we kind of, it kind of flustered up in the board. And because things have to be public, I can't hand that stuff to everybody. So the only way to air it out is in the board. So it can get a little uncomfortable for some people, but I work with these people enough to know that my, my feelings don't get hurt.
Thank you. And then we go to Mr. May.
Yes, I too am supportive of local control. And from my experience in Nevada County, my kids have come through Penn Valley and Grass Valley and Nevada Union School Districts. And I appreciated the difference in school boards and administrators and the student populations. And I appreciated local control very much. And as a, as a county board member, I would most definitely respect local control. I would respect the fact that it's, it's in our statutory governance rule that we do not have a role in determining the policies and the textbooks of the local school districts. And so, yeah, I'm all for local control and I, and I, and I know the, the school districts of this county and I think they're doing a great job. And it's such a, a school district, a local school district is such a complicated process. I wouldn't dream of interfering with, with their decision-making process. Instead, on the county level, we support, we support. And, and the board, that's our role is to, is to oversee the budget in such a way that we can support the local control and the local school districts. And of course, along with that is making sure that the academic performance index of each of the districts is up to level and we'll have reports from Scott on that. But I think the, I think, yeah, I think local control is great. I respect it very much.
And then we go to the candidates for trust area three, starting with Ms. Hudek. And again, the question was, do you believe that having many different school districts within our county is an effective style of education? What are advantages and disadvantages?
Well, I think I'd have to agree with all my previous candidates. I also agree that the smaller school districts are really nice and they're really, it's almost like having neighborhoods. You want to have your neighborhood reflect who you are. You want your school district to reflect who you are. And so it's just an important thing to have those small schools and school districts and to be able to make their own local choices and decisions. Advantages and disadvantages, I guess, you know, disadvantage, I guess, I don't know. They, they maybe don't communicate with one another as much as they should. Or I'm not quite sure of the other disadvantages, but I'm in agreement with the rest of my colleagues here.
Thank you. And final answer to that question from Ms. Baker.
Yeah, ditto. I mean, I think it's great that we have choice in our community. Again, as someone who's raised three kids here, it's really, you know, wonderful that I could take one out of this school because he wasn't as highly academic and he wanted to go to more an art space school and things like that. I like, I think the local control funding model is important. I think it's also really important that people show up to their school board meetings in their districts and talk about priorities because you can watch how people, the districts will determine what are the priorities. And, and that's something that I think, you know, everyone should be mindful of and, and how, how that money is spent. And that's a good thing that you could actually engage in. You can actually even sit on the local control panel for your district. So I think those are good things. It should be community based. And we have, in our own way, a very diverse community. And in our own county, things are fairly diverse. And so I think that it's helpful that we have that opportunity for all of us to be able to choose which district you want to be in. I mean, it's more the, the charters you get to choose within that. You don't really get to choose, I mean, my kid living in Nevada City isn't going to go to Bear River High School. But it's, but Lake of the Pines and Nevada City can be very different communities as well. So those are, it's probably, you know, I think it's a good thing. I don't have a strong opinion about it. I'll be totally honest with you, but I certainly love to have, and I think it's good for our teachers to figure out where they, where they fit in as well.
Thank you. And so we're now going to go into the closing statement period. So everybody who's been responding to these questions on the fly and an emergency basis, take a short breath and relax for just a second so that you can focus on the message you want to give to the voters out here. And we'll start with Ms. Newman. You have up to three minutes to close.
As schools process reopening, students and teachers' safety are the priority, but families also need to have some options. The single mom living in poverty shouldn't fall into homelessness to educate her child. Parents are telling me that their PG&E bill has gone up $100 during a time PG&E is turning off our electricity. Students with IEPs and special needs need the services and education our state constitution promises them. My hope is that while we keep our vulnerable teachers and students that want to stay sheltered, safe with distance learning, we also give families more on-campus options. There is some good news with COVID. Far fewer children die from COVID than predicted. My hope is that our nation can begin to celebrate something and what would be better than celebrating our children? My hope is that schools can begin to group students and teachers into cohorts or pandemic pods, allowing them to enjoy everything they miss so much from public education. It would be amazing to see music, drama, art, sports cohorts, all separated, paired with really brave, healthy teachers and coaches that are eager to be back with their students. As a Latina, I'm the only minority on the board. I'm used to seeing a sea of white faces and them not understanding. I get it. I may be the only woman of color currently elected in Nevada County. I come from a biracial family. My mother was born in Mexico City and she marched with Cesar Chavez. This gives me unique insight into one of the charter schools we oversee, which serves a large migrant worker population. My first real job was a press aide for former Assembly Speaker Willie Brown at our state Capitol. I have advocated for our children's safety and parental rights in Sacramento and DC for years. I have met with our current state senator, assemblywoman and congressman. For the last few years, I have been our board's legislative review member. Having legislative knowledge and relationships with our current representatives is very important as we transition through the COVID pandemic, wildfires, PG&E blackouts and racial division. During the last four years, I have kept my promise to be the voice for students, parents and teachers. I kept my promise to speak up for the underserved and marginalized. I'm the only board member that has served a full term, the only minority, the only board member with school-aged children and the only board member to vote independently. Each board member takes an oath to our constitution, which is based on checks and balances. The sign of a healthy board is that one that does not vote unanimously on every action item. If a board just rubber stamps what comes from Sacramento or the superintendent, what is the point of having that board? Governor Newsom has given us local control and I support utilizing that to best serve Nevada County students. On November 3rd, please vote for Ashley Newman, area two, Nevada County School Board. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me, Ashley, number four, education@gmail.com. And I would really appreciate your vote.
Thank you. And Mr. May, you have three minutes to close.
Thank you. The first thing I would come back to is upholding the, the school board, the county school board mission. This county school board mission is to provide services to the local school districts. And the, again, the, the need for a collaborative board. Yes, of course, there'll be disagreements and there'll be voiced in a collaborative fashion. But a board that is not disrupted and is instead allowed to do its work and support the local school districts is very important. Safety, I, all eyes are on safety. We don't know what the long-term effects will be for students. We don't know how many students are asymptomatic carriers. But, you know, I'm not going to stray from the, from the point of, of local control. Those school districts that are experimenting, admitting with the hybrid in-person education, more power to them. I'm fully supportive of it. Those that have decided on, on distance education, I'm supportive of that. How can we help? How can the county help you? That's our role. Professional development, it's very important to me. Professional development, it's very important to me. Pandemic teaching is extremely profoundly difficult, whether it be distance ed or in-person. We need to expand professional development. Something we haven't talked about tonight, and it's a passion of mine, is Volk Ed. When I was at the community college, I watched the funds from Sacramento dry up for vocational education, and when the pandemic is over, we can return to partnerships out in the community for Volk Ed, and we can help support local school districts in Nevada Union and others that have Volk Ed programs, support them in any way we can. And then lastly, the services that I've talked about that need our attention, and that is the lunch programs, the daycare, the mental health, the broadband, Wi-Fi, all of that. I ran for the county board because I want to serve. I can't, I've, I've spent a lifetime in education, I, I, I want to continue to serve, I can't get it out of my, my system. And I taught students, minority students, primarily minority students toward the end, with high achievement gaps, high achievement gaps. They came to us at the community college, and they were way behind. And it was amazing what great progress they made, and I, I loved my minority students, I loved all my students. And I just want to continue to serve on the county level to help the local school districts and respect local control. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we go to our Area Three candidates, beginning with Ms. Hudek.
Okay. For those of you who just tuned in, my name is Grace Hudek, and I'm running for Nevada County School Board, Area Two. You have a choice for school board. I acknowledge that this will not be an easy race. Julie has some amazing accomplishments, the center of arts is important, but what I think I do for families and helping families is more important. I'm somebody who can really help families get our school open, can really provide some answers, some guidance through this time of COVID. The difference also between Julie and I is that I understand that she comes from New York, she was born and raised in New York, and lived a good part of her life there, and I believe she has some New York values, and I'm one of the local ones here. I've, you know, we've talked about it earlier in my race here and early in our talk, my family values go deep and far into Nevada County. And so here's what I hope I have, I have your local, that you trust me, and that you'll vote for me, and that you'll see that I'm going to advocate for you, and I'm going to help you, your students and teachers through this time of crisis. And I just want you to remember, my name is Grace Hudek when you're filling out your ballot, and my website is grace-hudek.com. Thank you for attending tonight and listening to all the things that we have to say.
Thank you. And then final candidate from Area Three is Ms. Baker.
Yeah, thanks. So yeah, I'm Julie Baker, and I guess I have New York values. I'm not really sure what Grace means by that, but for me, New York values means that we get things done, that we're really straightforward, and that we are really take care of each other, because I can tell you that's what New Yorkers do. However, I've been here for 22 years, and I'm actually married to a family that has been here also. My, for my grandson, that's coming in November, will be seventh generation Nevada County. So I think I really do understand this community, I've worked here for 22 years, I've built businesses here, I've run nonprofits here, and now I also work at the state level, and I can bring my advocacy and legislation, understanding there as well, and understanding business and finance in order to run an effective board in terms of the budget. I don't think there's anybody who doesn't want our kids to go back to school. I mean, maybe my son, I think he kind of likes sitting at the table and then going skateboarding in the afternoon. But I can tell you that I know that he's not getting the best education that he could because this is hard, this is compromising, this is difficult, every teacher will tell you this, nobody, this is not ideal, but we're in a public health crisis. This is the reality of what we have to deal with. It is not within our purview to tell the districts how they're going to teach their, to teach the students. We can advise, we can provide guidance. The guidance I would give would be based on what the public health officials tell us to do. It would not be based on a conspiracy theory or a video that I've watched on YouTube that tells me that it's not going to kill that many children. I am not willing to take that risk, that it might not kill some kids. The other thing is that I've been endorsed by the former superintendent of schools, Holly Hermanson, as well as Terry McAtier, and as well as Stan Miller, who's the retired associate superintendent at Nevada County Schools. And I'll just read what he says about me, instead of me telling you why I think I'm the right candidate. As the former associate superintendent for Nevada County Superintendent of Schools Office, I've worked closely with the Nevada County Board of Education for many years. I know that Julie Baker is conscientious and highly qualified for the position of trustee. Julie's work as director of the Grass Valley Center for the Arts and Californians for the Arts has provided her with years of experience working as a leader with boards of directors, government, and the public. I'm confident that she will represent the interests of students, educators, and the public in general, with dedication, knowledge, creativity, and an open and unbiased approach to all of the varied concerns and issues put forward by the county board of education. I can think of no better professional, community member, and mother to represent her constituents. So that's what former superintendents believe. I hope you also support me in the role for Board of Trustee, Nevada County Board of Education, and trustee Area Three, but everyone in the county can vote, it's not just your trustee area. And if you want to visit my website, it's electjulibaker.com. And I have a fabulous 20-year-old as my campaign manager, who graduated from Nevada Union High School, and he is, really, also keeps me in touch with what kids want. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for a great presentation on behalf of your campaigns. Janice?
Okay. Thank you, candidates, this was really great. Thank you to Stephen for moderating, that was a heroic effort to go through two, back-to-back. Thank you to our media representatives, very much appreciate you always being with us at our forums, and special thank you to Pascal for letting us share on her Zoom webinar platform, we really appreciate it. Everybody, please visit our website, it does have...